Well, we'll come back to order. Following our recess, we're reconvening the August 24 meeting, but it is nine o'clock on August the 5th. And we're back to our agenda, and I think we've put off, we stopped at item 1.3, 1.4, and 1.5. And so with that, which one do y'all want to talk about first?
Maybe you should call them all together.
Well, before we do that, I didn't bring in the agenda, what did they?
Yeah.
We needed, we needed the sheriff to explain some stuff.
I just wondered if it's not helpful to just call them all.
If you can recall 1.2.
Oh, okay. I'm being requested to recall 1.2, which is a discussion regarding proposed department requested budgets and tax rate. Sheriff?
Yes. Okay, I think there was some confusion, and that's what I'd like to try to clear up today on, on positions. I know it said I got all the positions. Actually, the media was right here asking me, you know, how many positions you get, it's kind of embarrassing. I really, really don't know. So where we're at is, I originally put in for a jailer and a deputy, and I did get those positions. Since the storm, by the legislative committee, I was asked to identify areas we may be able to improve in. And that's what I've done. There are some areas of concern I have, so then I came up with this list that I presented a couple of times, is, is what I feel I need. I'm willing to talk about these, and I'd like to talk about each one of them. I asked, due to security issues, you know, I don't want to go in a lot of detail. That's why we had an executive session here in the last two weeks. But these are not in the budget. What I've asked for was two deputies, one was approved. I'm asking for a second deputy, and I'll explain why.
I'm, I'm confused. I don't know what we're starting from. I don't have anything in front of me.
Yeah.
Twice now.
Stuff he brought, I don't have it in front of me either. Stuff he brought to us.
He gave us this, and I always was concerned that these things were not included.
Okay.
We never did get a line item, line by line breaker.
We talked about it in the executive session, we wanted to come out and discuss it and vote on it.
Okay, this isn't. You got more?
You got more?
There's three pages total, that's all.
Okay. But this is in addition to what we already approved?
Not all of it.
Not all of it?
Yeah.
Well, we need to understand what's, what's new.
Let's let, let's let Tanya get caught up.
I think this is what we approved already.
Which one?
The, the one that's got the starting February, in the red column.
Okay.
I think that's what we've already approved.
I think so too.
I don't know, just let him explain it, I gotta figure it out.
I think we only approved one of those.
That may be more clearly.
This, this is what we approved. There's only one corrections officer.
I haven't, but I, I think something was confused.
I don't know, it's a mess.
Mm-hmm. Well, we just have to take it part and piece at a time, put it back together.
Yeah.
You bet, you bet.
We got all day, we got what it takes to do, to get fixed, Sheriff.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I really want to try to get to the bottom and explain it. So, once again, I originally asked for a, prior to this incident, a jailer and a deputy, to get to my, I said, we need eight deputies out here for shift. We need eight. We still have two shifts at six, seven. I have to get to seven, so I asked for, I asked for additional deputies till we get seven. You approved one, I'm asking for another one. In light of the storm, when I was asked to identify areas of concern that we need to probably improve on, that is getting, I need to get to eight, but we got to get to seven first, right? So another deputy will give me the seven, and then we'll work on it next year to get to eight. We need to have four, four more dispatchers. You know, right now, that's not reasonable. I need to ask for two dispatchers right now that will work nights. We need to have three dispatchers on all the time.
Okay. Do you have the same pieces, same schedules that we got? I think you do.
The one she just handed out to us.
I'm looking at one at the top that has two dispatchers, a patrol deputy, and two CID's. Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So everyone see this one?
Yeah.
Okay. Pencil of one on it, because we're going to, that's our pencil that we're talking about.
Now, you've already approved one. I asked under emergency situation, you've given me one of those CID deputies already.
Okay, so we've done one for the CID's.
I'm looking for one for October.
Okay.
One more deputy, two dispatchers.
Okay. And these are new to what was in your original request?
Exactly, yes, sir.
So if we go back to what we, what we approved, all of those plus these?
Correct, and there's some additional things.
Okay, now I'm looking at our auditor. In the second edition, what we're calling second edition.
Yes, sir.
Okay, which is the one, one that included what you asked for in open court.
Mm-hmm.
We included those requests that were in open court, not the stuff we talked about in executive session, right? You don't know what we talked about in executive session? But this is what we talked about in executive session?
Yes, sir.
So when we look at the second edition, and I'm just trying to get everybody on the same page here. The second edition of the budget includes everything that you asked for in that original budget workshop, okay?
And the CID petition that was approved this last evening.
The one?
Sorry. Major traffic accident.
And ask the public just to bear with us, we're all sitting here with code red phones on. We're not turning them off. So the one CID that you just identified is included in the budget that we're presently looking at.
Yes, sir.
So we're, we're going to be moving to a third edition here, and what you're asking in the third edition budget, I'm choosing terminology, we're all on, on the same page, third edition? That will be something that we don't have in our hands yet, that we will have to make. But the one CID is already in that budget. Is that right, right, Ms. Shelton?
Yes.
Okay. And so this would be adding two dispatchers, patrol deputy, and one CID?
Yes, and reclassifying, reclassifying my four deputies into jail.
That's probably a different case.
Next page.
Is that another page?
That'd be, that'd be the one that says start February.
With the red?
No, I think maybe the other, which one is it?
Okay.
I don't know.
Oh, well, it could be.
Yeah, no, you're right.
Okay, got you.
They're both, they're both special requests.
Okay.
No red.
No red.
No red is page two.
Let's mark that number two.
Who's on first?
That's page two.
And that is to reclassify one corrections officer to a corporal, and another one to a deputy.
Yeah, there's.
Now, is that new, or did we already approve that?
No, this is, this is new.
This is new?
Yeah.
It's one, one and then three deputy, three, it's a total of four, a corporal and three deputies. They're in the jail to regular deputy.
And these three classifications, Larry, would be in, in addition to the, the new hire?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So in the original one that was sent, they're on two different parts of the graph for the four positions.
And they are all different because of some minor paperwork.
Excuse me. I'm going to call for a five-minute recess so that we can just talk here in the courtroom. And I'm going to need to go get the, the prior stuff that we looked at when we put together the initial budget.
Sounds good.
Back to order. Anybody have anything to do before we bring this back to order?
I don't know where you want to fit him in, but Mr. Hall said he wants.
I seen there.
Okay.
We're on, we're on two right now. Another one?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I'm not going to ask anybody to come up and speak from, from the public until we get this talked out. You need to hear it all. Then you, you want to come up and talk to us about it, you can, okay? We're not, we're not ignoring it. Okay. I'm putting a paperclip on the stack that I called originals. And that was in the second edition of the budget, which is right here. Here's the second edition, and right behind it is the first edition. So again, keeping all of this separated. Here's fir, here's the second edition, which is the live document we're working with right now. And everything that's in the originals is in the second edition. I'm going to set the originals right here. The things that we need to talk about are the, the current discussion are the new ones that have not been included. And I've marked as page one, the one that has the two dispatchers, the patrol deputy, and the two CID's. And we are all of the same understanding that one CID has already been added. Ms. Shelton? The one CID that's been added, that was included with the originals in the second edition budget. Good. So now we're just talking about the remainder of what's on this page one. Page two has two corrections officers being reclassified to a deputy and one to a corporal. And what those are, are full deputies. The third page has three positions on it, which are either in the academy or about to start the academy. And they will be, they'll graduate from the academy. And they will be, they'll graduate from the academy. And will become full deputies, but right now, for lack of a better term, we're calling them pre-deputy. They're working at jail, they have law enforcement responsibilities, but they haven't gotten the deputy designation yet. So that's what you're asking us to consider?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Where do you want to start?
Okay. I'll give you some reasons why I'm asking for that. Of course, I want to make sure and be transparent to the court. With those full commission deputies investigators, I really come with vehicles. They will need to be outfitted. I want to be transparent. I have all those numbers and prepared to give them Tanya or whoever at any time. So I'm going to give you some examples of why I'm asking for you, asking this for you. Obviously, I've been charged with having to answer to the committee, what recommendations can we do? I've told you all for a while, I'm trying to get to eight deputies, you know, seven now, two shifts have six. I'm going to give you a good example in just the last four days, what happened. And we're going to start with last night. Should have six deputies on that schedule. One guy vacationed. It's obviously summer. You get PTO time, you should be able to take it with his family. Second deputy has, and this happens more and more all the time, second deputy son has surgery. Should be able to take off, right? Gives me four deputies, right? With the four deputies, we get two mental health transports, something I can't do. Two hundred and fifty-three today, today. Last year, full year, two fifty-three. One thing I can't do, it's just too much. Basically, a deputy's transporting all the time. That takes me to three deputies. That's unsafe. Unattended death. I'm at the office seven o'clock preparing for today. I'm with the guy till after ten. I go to help that deputy, happened to be a cousin of mine across the street from me that passed away. So I deal with that. So I got two deputies out for this whole county. That's not safe. You know, we have to do a better job. We have to look into that. We'll go to Saturday. You know what I mean? When that rain come in, the eight to 10 inches of rain we got. Thank God, there's still over ninety DPS troopers here, but they're leaving. They're going to start cutting back next week. You know what I mean? I just had to be better prepared to handle these situations. You know, what is the number, the total number? I don't know. I know it's my job to come to this court to ask you all, I need to get to eight deputies, but we have to get to seven first. That's kind of the big picture. I can give you stats all day long. As far, we're just getting more and more calls. It's just going to continue to get busier. Obviously, in these storms, we're going to have to change our protocols. There's stuff in-house I'm working on. You know, identifying, you know, all these low water crossings, how we're going to approach it, you know. Right now, it's by experience. This guy's been here a long time, but you know, we're just going to have to rush up on that. Like the legislative committee has asked me to take a really hard look, what we can do. Dispatch, I mean, you know, I don't know if I'd have had five dispatchers that day would have happened. Nine-one-one calls came in, they rode over to Bander, they rode over to Guadalupe County, you know, they were busy. They were just slammed, you know what I mean? But I think it's my job to get three in there at all times, so you know, it won't hurt, it'll help. That's kind of the big picture, and I'll be happy to answer any questions from there.
Larry, going back, you know, two years and what have you. You are doing a fantastic job, okay, what you got. Okay, at first, you were having a hard time hiring, and we bumped the salaries up and made it competitive around the hill country.
Correct.
And that helped a whole lot. What I'd like to see is, you know, the light at the end of the tunnel. With these additions. Should be, should be, carry you for several years without.
Absolutely not. It'll be coming with the same thing next year.
Really?
Yes.
He said he wanted to get to eight.
You got to get to eight deputies?
Well, I understand that, but if we get to eight, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, well, you know, it changes.
Things can happen.
I hope if I have eight deputies out there, we can handle it. I mean, yeah, you could use ten, but reasonably, I know there's only so much in the budget. But I want to remind you, we're the only office slash department that works 24/7, 365, okay? It's three or four o'clock in the morning when this happened. You know, yeah, we're going to call people out, but it could take an hour or something. We need all hands on deck as soon as possible. So that's something I want to be clear and transparent to the public. We're 24/7, 365. The lights don't come off in our business. Holidays, bad weather, flood, it doesn't.
Right.
You know, and I know that's tough, you know, we just get busier. I mean, as county grows, you know what I mean? When people call us, you know, they want us there, like now. You know, when I have two deputies for the whole county, that's not good, that's not safe.
Yeah, and you're having to cover Ingram right now, too.
Well, we can go there, thank you. You know, that's on my note here. You know, we're four and a half years in. I mean, you know what, I wish I had the opportunity to not give a service. You know what I mean? I'm here fighting for it. You know, as of yesterday, my understanding is they're down to two officers again. You know what I mean? I mean, and it's clear, through the past seven chiefs, they've told me that they don't intend on ever going to 24-hour service. That's wrong, okay? But who has to pick it up? I do.
Are you required to use a commissioned officer for MHD transport?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, for safety reasons, yeah. I mean, we have sent, if we don't, we'll send a jailer with a commissioned guy, just for safety reasons. But we do, you know, and you got to understand, it takes one PD officer. We kind of work together for safety reasons. Usually, one PD officer will go and one deputy will go. Last night, when you have two, they're going to the same place, well, it makes sense. We took two vehicles, city took one county, and we followed each other. You know, San Antonio is not worried. You start going a little past that, you talk about restroom break stop or something, that's a big safety reason. But we always send, yeah, one commissioned officer.
You have to be commissioned.
Yes, sir. I mean, those, like I said, I'm at two fifty-three today. That's where I was last year. I got seven weeks to go. I mean, it just keeps going. You talk about Ingram, you talk about the normal calls, you talk about moving forward, new procedures. I'm just laying it out to you.
So Sheriff, what's the added cost? You mentioned we have to have fully equipped vehicles for that staff. Do you have that added cost?
Yeah, yeah, for the three, that's $174,000, but obviously, they're payments, you know, it's paid out, but that's the total cost that we wrote a check for.
Is that based on lease, or?
Yeah, lease. You know, let's talk about that, you know what I mean? It's $103,000. When I first got in office, it was $54,000 per unit. It is doubled. It's crazy. It's, yeah, sets me a lot, you know, some of the prices we have to pay to do this business.
So to try to quantify the ask. We'll do them one at a time.
Okay.
Let's go back to the one with the dispatchers on it. My page number one. If I'm reading this exhibit correctly. The annual cost of the two new dispatchers, the patrol deputy and the two CID and. Well. We're going to have to probably deduct out that CID officer because we've already put that in the budget. So the. The annual on the CID officer is $78,669. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I see you've got it broken out biweekly, too, but we're talking about aggregate numbers here.
Yeah, total.
And so when I look at that, three thirty-seven, six fifty-four. We would have to subtract seventy-eight, six ninety-nine. Because it's already in the budget.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
That's the added ask?
Yes.
Makes it two fifty-eight, nine fifty-five.
Say that again?
Two fifty-eight, nine fifty-five is the number.
Two fifty-eight, nine fifty-five. And then because we're adding two. We're adding three vehicles or two vehicles. What are we adding?
Three.
Three? That's a hundred and seventy-four thousand?
Hundred and seventy-four, seven eighty.
So we've got, I'm just approximating. Two fifty-nine for personnel. And one seventy-five for outfit, right?
Yes, sir.
One thirty-three. Okay.
Excuse me, but don't we already, we had already approved one new patrol deputy, too?
Sheriff?
Yes.
Mr. Jones is asking a question.
Oh, sorry.
Hadn't we already approved one new patrol deputy?
Yes, sir.
And this is somebody different?
Yes.
That's what we're trying to do.
Okay.
This is an addition.
If I get both these, that'll put me to seven per shift.
Okay.
Okay. So let's go to page number two. This is the one where we have the corrections officers, one being reclassified to a corporal and one being reclassified to a deputy. And these are full deputies, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it looks like the promotion that they get is going to cost the county seventeen thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. Then we do with roll-ups, it goes to twenty-one, four twenty-seven. Is that right?
Well, then Jason Speaker, he's on top of it. Well, Sylvia gave me a different sheet this morning. I'm trying to add that up. So the reclassification of the peace officer, certified corrections officer, patrol deputy. You're looking at an annual increase of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars on top of what there are.
Thirty-one thousand, what was it?
Thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars.
That's different from this.
That's different from this, so.
No, wait, wait. That's the other special request.
Well, that's, I'm sorry.
That's the number from page number three.
When you're looking at that sheet, that was a little bit confusing. It was broken down into two different blocks. All that should have been all under one block, so you got to kind of put the two together. That was what the little confusion was.
Then let's start over on this one. Because we have to get it clear. And I apologize that the clock is ticking.
I apologize, too.
So I'm looking at one I call page number two. And it has the.
The two, yes. Seventeen thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. Then once you add your roll-ups, it is twenty-one thousand, four twenty-seven.
But you're saying those are included on page number three?
No.
On some of the examples, they are page three. We're looking at two different ones that add the seven dollars.
Well. If we look at page number two. The figure at the bottom that's highlighted in blue is twenty-one.
Let's for clarification. So the one that you're looking at has two positions on it, the first one, correct?
That's our page number two.
Correction officer sergeant being reclassified to a patrol corporal. And then you have a corrections peace officer being reclassified to a deputy.
Right.
And it shows the annual increase with roll-ups at twenty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
And is that, is that a number we can take to the bank?
Yes, that's the one Sylvia did.
Okay.
Then you have a second block of correction officers.
Another page?
Yes, sir.
We're calling that page three?
Yes, sir.
And it's got three positions on it?
Yes, sir.
And one is a corrections officer reclassified to a patrol deputy?
Yes. These three are currently the ones you talked about that are in the academy.
Yes, but he graduates from the academy in October, so.
One's in October, the other two are in February.
Right. And so you've gone through and allocated the appropriate time period that they're going to be working for you?
Yes.
And the three of those, as they come back, when they come back. Is that number at the bottom that's highlighted in the blue a correct number?
It'll be a correct number.
That's thirty-one thousand, one thirty-nine?
Yes. So there's a little bit of confusion with this. There is actually four positions, but you're looking at five people. Some of those may be some overlap, so one of these positions most likely sometime after October will fill one of the empty deputy positions. But we still got to account for that reclassification for the time that he's there. So in the simplest term, we are reclassifying one supervisor in three positions. But for Tanya's sake, we have to, we have to, we have to show these numbers in the October starting budget. So.
Okay, listen to my comments.
This, these numbers could actually decrease some after October.
Well.
There's a little bit of confusion there, but this is probably the high number. We'll just say that.
Let's go with the numbers.
So I'm looking at my auditor. We're adding about four hundred and thirty-three, thirty-four thousand dollars over here on page one with the vehicles. Two dispatchers, patrol deputy, and one new CID officer. And then we go to page number two. We're adding, we're reclassifying two corrections officers. And that's going, the impact of all of that is going to be twenty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. So we'll go.
Plus thirty-one thousand, one thirty-nine.
And that's on page three?
Yes.
So it's these three pages that KCSO is asking be included in the next edition of the budget. In addition to what we've already done. And so this is, this is about another half million dollars, just under.
So just to be clear on what I would have, if there's additional costs that I don't think we talked about, also an outfit and a patrol deputy. And that looks like it's about twenty-two thousand each. Is that right?
Yes.
Say that again?
Your reclassifications, they're, don't worry about that, as far as outfit. It's just your new positions, your CID, your two CID investigators and your, and your two deputies.
So the deputies that were already in the budget, the CID that's already in the budget, and the CID is already being hired now, we're going to have to outfit them next time, not now, not in the current budget?
Not in the current budget.
So we have to add outfitting one additional officer?
The only thing you should be covering in the current budget for that CID that y'all approved for immediate hire would be the additional salary cost.
Oh, just a second. Hold it, hold it right there. I need to get my auditor's attention when she has them on. I know. Simple question is, with regard to the cost to outfit the CID officer that we included in the budget. Did we include the outfitting cost?
No.
So that has to be added.
They didn't have it somewhere that they can find it in the budget for the current year is what I hope for. But we'll add it to the.
We'll take care of that this year on the one y'all hired. Don't worry about that.
In your existing budget?
Yes, we'll figure it out.
So with regard to our second edition. The only thing that we're discussing right now is adding another approximate half million dollars, whatever the actual number comes out. For these three pages. Which I call the to be added to the second edition. And I'm looking at Sylvia, and I'm looking at Kenya. To make sure that we're all on the same page as to what we're going to try to put in this next edition of the budget.
I guess I get about six hundred and thirty-one-ish thousand dollars.
Okay.
And that's what we're hoping to make.
Okay. Six thirty, you think it's going to be?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is about one season on the tax.
Okay, we're still on item one point two. Of the agenda. Is that to conclude your request?
Yeah, there, no, Judge, there's one more thing I wanted to talk to you of, it's not related to that. I put in the original budget a deductible contingency plan. I don't believe that was put in there, fifteen thousand dollars. What I'd like to, obviously, we're not probably going to be moving this year. What I'm asking Tanya is that we had twenty-five thousand dollars set aside for furniture that I used fifteen thousand dollars and put in this contingency line item, and let me explain why. I don't think it's fair to my budget to have to just find money all the time for vehicles. I'm going to give you an example. In the last three years, we've had, I've had to come up with thirty-nine thousand dollars. It's not just easy to come up. It depends what part of your budget, my thousand dollar deductibles. Two thousand, twenty twenty-three, I had fifteen vehicles damaged, that each one of those was a thousand dollars. Twenty twenty-four, I got lucky and had one. Twenty twenty-five, I had ten damaged, fourteen totaled, okay? I've lost one in this flood. I've got, right now in the back, I have three Tahos with transmissions out. We're going to fix one and not the other two. I've got another one with the rear end out. Those are my spares that aren't usable, but that equals thirty-nine thousand dollars. It's just not that easy, you know, go to the budget and find it. I need a contingency plan, and I'm just starting with fifteen thousand dollars. I don't know what's going to happen. Obviously, gas, if anybody can tell me what gas is next year, that would help, but that's why I asked for the contingency plan of fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay. When did you ask for that?
In my original budget.
Is it in the original budget?
It was, and he added it on the, I would have to go back and look, because my understanding was he added it in his ass at the department that it wasn't in his budget at that time. And it was never added back in, but then I went back later and looked, and it was part of something. It was talked about on it. So I can't answer that question at this point. And there's the money for the furniture move was twenty thousand, not twenty-five thousand. And that is no, had been taken out of the budget with the Judge Kelly's. And he did not put in the fifteen thousand, because we have a contingency fund that's at the county level that we have the money over to cover that if he needed it and couldn't find it anywhere else.
Well, and that's what I don't think's right. Just go find. Well, and that's what I don't think's right. Just go find it. It's not that easy. Depends what time of the year, you know. Go find it. Where we draw the line, I'll go find it.
We're at a pretty critical point, Sheriff. How big is our, our contingency fund right now?
Um, it's, we added.
For the, for the new budget?
For the new budget, I need to look. I want to say it's one point two million.
Yeah.
Because the unknowns that we're still, are thinking may not be paid in the current year or next year in the aftermath of this.
And so that the, the public understands what we're talking about. And you may recall, I call it budget culture. Uh, because we're conservative, uh, all of our department heads and offices kind of plan for having to find money like Sheriff's talking about. Go back to their budget and see where they've got money to be able to cover these unforeseen expenses that arise. As a county, we have a formal contingency fund, and through the years, we've made it bigger over time because we found that, uh, we do have unexpected expenses that come out. And we're trying to get it big enough to discourage the department heads and the elected officials to not have their own kind of silent contingency in their budget. And they're, and they're there. And it drove me crazy the first year I did budget because I couldn't find them. And it would have a deficit. And then at the end of the fiscal year, when the money that's not spent comes back, uh, which turns out that we have millions, sometimes a couple of million dollars, that go unspent. And it's hard to budget like that, but the thing about it is, my department heads and the elected officials do such a great job. Uh, and, uh, just like we're talking about here, I, I know it's difficult, Sheriff, but, uh, you've been successful doing it, and I congratulate you for that.
Thank you.
But at the same time, uh, I don't think we ought to get too distracted in what we're trying to do here. We're working against a Friday deadline, and if we do not get the budget on file by Friday, we revert back to last year's budget. And that will probably put the county out of business. So, where are we on this contingency? Is that something that we can resolve between now and Friday when we finalize the budget?
Y'all need to decide what you're going to do, what you're going to offer us, anything that you can at this point.
And how much are you asking for in addition?
Fifteen thousand.
So we've got the six thirty and the fifteen. Is that right?
Ballpark.
Any other proposed department budget request that we need to consider before we move on? Okay, thank you.
Yes. Do we need to go back and, on some of them, we need to discuss, or you want to wait?
This, this is the, the item on the agenda where we deal with the department, proposed department and office budgets.
Okay, because on proposed departments.
We're going back, I'm going back on the second edition. Okay?
And I'm not sure where you've got it lined out on there, but we're looking at the animal control, and, and there was a correction that you were making on that. You had originally, originally proposed, uh, I think it was a mistake, that, that oversight, uh, where they went from the current grade of twenty-one.
Okay.
To twenty-two point five.
So that everybody can figure out where we are. This is what we determined to be the original request. And it's the special request. The HR number at the bottom is seven point fourteen point two five. And it is page, it has one of three pages. Those are the special requests, and that's where the animal control solid waste is. And that's what you're looking at, is that right, Mr.?
That's what I'm looking at here, right, right.
You see what I'm talking about right here?
I've got to get the bright, one of those.
That's it?
Yeah.
So I need to know which one you finally put into this second request, or proposal?
This is the one where Animal Control was asking that their law enforcement deputies be raised to a twenty-one five, step twelve. And, uh, I had recommended it, uh, when we had the workshop and it was put to a vote. Uh, it was not. The order that was entered left it at a step six. And so that's what's in the, that's what's in the first and second edition of the budget, is a step six. It has not been changed to step twelve. Does that answer your question?
It does.
They're not very happy with me about it, but that's where it is.
That's the fine. That's where I was wanting to go, find out where we were at on that.
That's where we are.
Okay.
Anything else with departments or offices?
Well, just, I, I would still like an explanation for the new position of Elections Administrator. Why do we need that?
Because we're understaffed in the elections.
Well, we hired a, a number of people after it shifted from tax over to county clerk. It's, it's hard for me to understand why we need that, and it, why is it an Elections Administrator as opposed to just hiring another clerk?
Well, because we're, we're trying to get to an Elections Administrator. I understand you may oppose it.
Yes, I do.
But that's the goal.
Well, is that what the rest of the court wants?
I'm, I'm trying to, yeah, because this is all, this is first I heard of it whenever all this was being put in the budget. And so I'm, I'm, I do have some questions. It's a full-time position that we're creating. Uh, will there be other duties? I think that, that's kind of, I think what it sounds like you're probably asking, rather than just somebody that is assigned that duty, how are, what are we looking to do?
We're looking to have an independent Elections Administration. That's what we're talking about doing. That action has not been taken by the county at this point.
Right, but that would be a full-time employee?
Yes, they would run an office. Mr. Pata?
Commissioner Jones, to answer your question, an Elections Administrator would also take over voter registration. And so that number was provided at, at a request Judge asked if we could put that number. That's why it's on that spreadsheet. And so they would come, they would be their own department. Elections Administrator would oversee that department, and they would have clerks underneath them.
Is this the best year to be doing that?
How, how, how would it even work?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm more concerned.
Nearly every, any counties?
That's what most counties have.
We're lucky it don't, and we haven't, so.
I'm, I'm just more concerned about the fact that we're trying to, to get through a pretty rough budget here, and the sheriff just dumped a bunch on us.
Right.
Is this the best time to do that, or would we be better served?
And we've been digging everywhere to try to put off things, like some of our road and bridge projects to get the numbers down, you know? And, uh, I agree with you that, I don't know if this is the best year to add that position.
You've got one person that wants to speak on this.
Okay, Ms. Caines?
Thank you, Nikki Caines. Uh, I have been asking since this was passed over, when the first sheet was put out for new positions, again, why we need it. From my understanding, the numbers here are transfer from the tax office. Does that mean now that Mr. Reeves' office is no longer handling voter registration? So that's put on to an Elections Administrator, so now their duties are less? And then when you ask about an Elections Administrator, uh, the biggest election we've had here in a long time, which was this last presidential, we had mandates coming down from Jane Nelson, Secretary of State. And for the first few days of early voting, it took Elections workers and common citizens to bring it to the attention of the Elections Administration that was working it, that those mandates had been updated. So for the first few days, we had people who were questioning, uh, about people voting with temporary IDs, like their driver's licenses. And that was not instituted for the first few days because the Elections Administration here claimed they were not aware of it. So if we're going to hire somebody, I'd like to know who they're accountable to. Is it an appointed position, an elected position? And what is the hierarchy for, um, like what happened? How does a common citizen go, hey, that was never handled?
It would be another department that reports to the court, just like all our department heads do. Oh, that's right.
Yes, yes.
So an Elections Administrator would be their own department, and they would, um, report to a board, which would consist of the tax assessor-collector, the county clerk, the county judge, the Republican chairman, and the Democratic chairman. They are not elected, they would be appointed.
Correct.
Yeah, and, and I would say, Nikki, you probably made a good case for having one.
Yeah, absolutely.
If we were having a struggle. And, and that's why I'm saying, but, but my whole point isn't whether we do or don't need one right now. It's can we afford one right now? It's, it's more my point, uh, because right now, I'm thinking, we're, we're just, Sheriff, you just dumped a bunch on us right now. And we're trying to figure out how to get through a pretty big crisis right now.
We're in off years, right.
And for me, adding another employee, even though it might be needed, very well needed, uh, I'm not sure it's wise right now.
And if I understand it from that original sheet, that would be at a total cost of a hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars to create that new position. So the people that have been doing it, are they being used in-house and being moved over? And where does that, where did, where do those monies come from?
So the current Elections employee, uh, current employees in the Election Department would be part of the new departments. One would have to be an Elections Administrator because you have to have a department head. And then Bob would give up one of the voter registration, am I correct? Oh, okay. Maybe he's giving us two.
But it doesn't make sense, because right now, you've got people in tax assessor-collector that, that they do voter registration in addition to a lot of other duties. No. So they're specifically only doing voter registration?
They're so shorthanded, they do other duties. They're dedicated voter registration.
How many do you have that are dedicated?
I have two voter registration clerks. Let me get up to the official.
Thank you.
First of all, I thank Nadine, and she's back there and can't speak. I think we're getting thrown under the bus for the simple reason, Ms. Zapata, Judge Kelly came to us, what would it take to create one? We didn't go to them to say we wanted to create one. I want that clear. I'm damn tired of this. Now, I have two voter registration clerks. They're just like every other employee in my office. They're cross-trained. But don't go telling me how I've got my staff set up, Commissioner. If you want to know, walk in there and look, but don't throw us under the bus.
I'm not throwing you under the bus, Bob. I just thought it was working pretty damn well, but it is.
So to me, that leaves a lot of questions in mind. If you're, if he, if you're going to, are you going to lose those two people to move over to this? Or, or are we now going to have to create two more people to be part of the Elections Administrator?
My voter registration staff, I've asked one to protect their jobs. That's all I'm concerned about. I don't want to hire somebody from outside if my staff could move over there, but I don't want to lay them off either.
But you said those two people did voter registration plus other duties, so I'm.
Just like everybody completely sweeping the course.
So I'm saying, are those two people that are doing voter registration, are they going to be moved over underneath this other position?
That is the plan if the administrator wanted to hire them.
That looks like a lot more positions than an Elections Administrator, that's.
Bob? If, if we were to pass on this till next year, would you be able to manage till then?
I'll do whatever my job entails, Commissioner.
I know you will, and you always do.
So, if you want to pass and do it, I frankly do not think we could get it done by November or by March, considering the events of thirty days ago.
Right.
I say pass.
Yeah. I'm sure, I still haven't got my head straight, what we're going to have total for hires. Is where I'm still a little confused here.
For hires?
I don't, well, yeah, because we're talking about this administrator, but it sounds like it's going to create vacancies possibly in your department as well. Is that correct?
I can only speak to mine, uh, my department. I have two voter registration clerks. Um, the staff would have to, if they were going to remain voter registration clerks, they would have to move over to this new department.
And that would create a, a void in your department.
It would create a void, I think, is better than vacancy. Does that mean I'd go back and hire two more property slash motor clerks? No.
I was in Bob's office a couple of days ago, and we were talking about different things, and he pointed out how everybody was cross-changed, just because, because they're shorthanded sometimes.
Yeah.
And, and it just works that way. It's, you know, they don't, they're not hired to do multiple, but they end up doing it. And he's got to make it work, and, and it does work.
Agreed. That's been great.
Okay. Let me clarify something. Item one point two, as a budget item, is a discussion issue only. Does not call for any action. I'm hearing that y'all want to take some action. That would have to be done when we get ready to do the, the budget. It's not part of, we couldn't do it in, in one point two because we can't, it's not an action item. We can't do it in one point three because that's wage adjustment. And we can't do it in one point four, I don't think, uh, because that has to do with the salary increases for elected, uh, county and precinct officials. And one point five has to do with base salaries for elected officials that has to be published in the paper.
You can give the auditor an instruction about what to include and not to include in your proposed budget. And if you're hearing, um, that your commissioners don't want to include this position or office in your proposed budget, you can make that instruction to the auditor to take it out if you choose to.
It's up to you what you put in the proposed budget. It's our position.
And it won't require action today, and that action will be later when the court considers the budget.
Sure.
Good. Thanks for that clarification.
Any more explanation about that?
May I speak?
Did she fill out a form? Just, just grab a form. I thought everybody understood this.
She said, she said please.
I know. Well, I've been waiting.
She wasn't planning to speak, but obviously, she wants to talk on this.
I think, Mr., I think Mr. Hall wanted to speak on one point two.
Yeah, I think he changed it, yeah. Ms. Hurd?
Um, thank you, Judge and counsel. I just want to point out that according.
Dude, we're not, we're not counsel.
I mean, sorry, commissioners.
You, you need to identify yourself.
Thank you. My name is Helen Hurd. I am a resident of Kerr County. I'm also the, uh, county chair for the Republican Party in Kerr County. The state election code mandates that the county clerk is responsible for elections in all Texas county. The position of an Election Administrator is over and above election law. And I would point out to the court that that position of county clerk is up for election next March. We do not know who the county clerk is going to be, and that person may be eminently qualified to run our elections. So I, I would think that appointing an administrator at this point is premature and go along with the commissioners who have said that this is probably not the appropriate time, uh, to create that new department. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hollis, I see that you have amended your. Mr. Hall, I see that you have amended your request. You want to talk about item 1.2?
Yeah, my comments, uh, apply basically to all the agenda items that were up for today. So I'll just, I figured I'd jump in now. Roger Hall, Independence Lane, co-founder of Liberty in Action and a board member. My wife, Terry, could not be here this morning because of a prior commitment leading our scout troop planning meeting. I know that may come as a shock that we have many other important things to do with our valuable time than come to these proceedings, watchdogging our government. That includes myself taking time away from my business and clients to be here today. Yesterday, Commissioner Harris brought up our personal taxes and then proceeded to twist what my wife said on the radio, calling her a liar, and that she does that frequently. This behavior violates the Court's Code of Conduct, Rule 4E, that states, "No demeaning of individuals or groups." Yet that's precisely what Commissioner Harris did when he broke the rules of decorum and stooped to a personal attack. The fact is, I told her our annual bill would go up as much as twelve hundred if the Commissioners jacked up the rate eight percent. You're conflating two different conversations. Now, I may not calculate everything right, decoding the complex nuances that go into how to calculate or even understand our appraised values, much less how that combines with the tax rate to end up with our property tax bill. But the records you looked up leave out the important detail of how much taxes would have gone up if we did not challenge the higher appraised values every year. The Appraise Board, the appraisal board has tried to bump it up a hundred thousand dollars just since 2022. Commissioner Harris, while you were taking the time looking up our appraised values, you left off 2025. It's going up another forty-three thousand dollars, nearly doubling in less than ten years. That's unsustainable and would tax someone out of their home if they didn't take time off work and spend their valuable time protesting their appraisals every year. We're here to fight for our community, people we didn't even know just a few years ago, and the common cause of liberty, freedom, shrinking government. Why? Because government grows, liberty recedes, and defend and protect our Christian heritage and conservative values. Not every fight involves us personally, like you're trying to frame this. We do it out of love for our neighbors, this community, recovering flood victims, and the great state of Texas and our country. But rest assured, out of, out of control, property taxes profoundly affect everyone under sixty-five. The public outrage is from your voting to even consider an eight percent hike at a time like this. That should have never been on the table. Just because we see your actions differently does not make it a lie. Even after saying you won't raise taxes that high, the current budget on the table still includes a two and a half percent pay increase, bringing county pay raises to more than sixteen percent in just three years. That would still increase our property taxes in the middle of a disaster. The only way to keep taxes the same despite using the no new revenue rate phrase is to lower the tax rate from last year's rate to offset the higher appraisals. You have to do this every year in order just to keep taxes the same. That doesn't even begin to actually lower the current tax burden. Another issue I hear in these discussions is that wages need to keep up with the cost of living or inflation. News flash, nobody's wages keep up with any inflation, especially Bidenflation. It's a bad thing. So how about we stop personal attacks and focus on what's best for our citizens at this time of crisis and reduce the tax burden, not add to it? And I want to add, from what I've heard this morning, Sheriff's Department needs what they're requesting. Take all the other extra money you're, you're proposing, give it to that need. That is the need for safety in our, in our county. Thank you.
Any other discussion about proposed department requested budget?
No.
So let's move on to item 1.3. Consider discuss to take appropriate action to approve fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six Kerr County Wage Adjustment. Ms. Zapata?
As requested yesterday, y'all asked for some more figures, so that was emailed to y'all. I have a copy if you need one.
I need one.
You need one?
Yeah.
We have a little email issue going right now.
Oh, that's right. Did you get one?
No. That's fine. You got it somewhere? Okay. I took one. Here, you have that.
Yeah, I got one.
He's got one now. Anyway, now everybody's got it. Any questions, discussion?
Right now, uh, you have a 2.5 figured in.
Bob, are you gonna be figuring in something yesterday you were asked?
Yes, I had the information, the measure of Paces.
Okay.
Probably is worth looking at that before we make any decisions.
All right.
Before we get to you, Bob, I want to ask you to come to the, the podium and, uh, address Mr. Paces' concerns. Mr. Paces?
Commissioner, if I understood correctly, you were wanting to know what the tax rate would need to be if the average homeowner paid the same amount of money in the twenty-five tax year as the twenty-four. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Then that tax rate would be point three eight three one.
What, what, should we be calling that rate?
I don't know. I've never had that question asked.
There was confusion over the no new revenue rate.
The no new revenue rate is a term in the code.
Yeah. Okay. Anyway. Maybe it's a no new tax rate. You're right.
It's the mega rate.
That'd be a break the county rate.
It might be.
They changed that term about the time we got up here, I think.
Yes, sir. Two thousand and nineteen, before that is the effective tax rate.
Right.
And of course, that would change even after this morning. Right?
No, sir. My rates won't change.
No.
It won't? Oh, yeah, yeah.
He's only looking at the revenue side.
Yeah.
My rates won't change. This would amount to about a million two lower levy.
Yeah, that, that's...
Countywide.
Approximately a million two.
Million two lower, uh, revenue, if you will.
Yep. Okay. That's what we needed. Thank you, Bob. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Lynn?
I know y'all cringe when you see me get up here, so I'm just gonna play the same broken record. All the employees in this county, ninety percent of them are taxpayers. Their taxes are not frozen. They pay taxes here. They work here. They keep this building, outside of the building, at the sheriff's office, the courthouse, annexes, they keep it going. They're here day in and day out, like Bob said. They sweep the floors. They do everything they need to do, not only their job. So, again, I know it's hard for y'all to give our employees pay raises, and my heart goes out to everybody in this community. Again, our groceries go up, everything for us goes up too, and I will gladly pay those higher taxes. My taxes aren't frozen yet. I don't draw to salaries. I work here day in and day out. I do above and beyond what my job is, just like the sheriff, just like his employees. And our people step up just like everybody else. So it's hard, and I get it. And they're hard decisions, but on the backside, I've been here eighteen years and I've seen this budget every year, and it's the same complaint, same complaint, not giving employee raises. And when you do, it's very low.
That's wrong.
Sheriff, yes, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Look what we've done the last three years.
Never seen a six percent raise for all these employees here, Mr. Commissioner Harris.
Five was pretty good. Four was pretty good.
And I understand law enforcement. They need it. They work very hard. I worked in law enforcement myself. But you know what? There's a lot of other people in this building that work hard, Commissioner.
Oh, I agree.
But I, I think sometimes y'all forget. Do you ever go to, I haven't seen any of y'all come to our office to thank anybody. Oh, I'm, I apologize. I'm the district clerk. Yes. I mean, I've been here for eighteen years and I, I was HR director. I am not running again, and I've seen how a lot of things have declined here, and our employees are not happy. It's hard to get employees to work here. They work two jobs in my office to make ends meet, and I think some of you Commissioners work two jobs. I, I'm just trying to bring some of the facts forward, you know? I mean...
But I appreciate your point of view, but let me tell you, I talked to some county employees yesterday, and they said that if it came to a pay increase versus paying higher taxes, they didn't want pay increase.
Well, I haven't seen you in my office.
I, I have no reason to be up in your office.
I, I, those employees are county employees of...
I'm not going from office to office to office asking people their opinions.
Really? Thank you, Commissioner.
No, ma'am, I'm not.
Mr. Hall left, didn't he? The issue before us is an action item with regard to the wage adjustment. Is there any motion? Can we, can we table this for now? I want to hear some of the other good news about how maybe we've saved some money from what is in the current proposed budget.
They, uh...
In respect to Road and Bridge and some other things like that.
They need to be able to post the elected salaries.
It's gotta make a decision today.
Yeah.
Well, I, when I say pass, I just, I want to hear the other information. Uh, you know, we can come back to this today. Then, then let's go back. Let's go back to item 1.2. We can talk, we can talk about all the departments. And you want to talk about Road and Bridge? You want to talk about the other departments? That's the time to talk about. Okay. So we're back to 1.2. What is it you want to talk about? Well, whatever they found out yesterday, you know, we left a meeting because they were gonna have some meetings and then look at the cost of...
Oh, or two-thirty meeting. Do you want to fill them in on that?
The bridge.
The two-thirty meeting and where we're at, or maybe, uh, Tanya, about what, how she may be changing.
It impacts it, doesn't it?
It does.
It does.
That's what I've been waiting to hear.
Why don't you and I have a discussion? I think we can, we could talk this thing through. Want to make sure we get it right. The meeting we had yesterday at two or two-thirty, whatever time we started in, uh, that went for probably at least an hour and a half was with FEMA and representatives from Tidham. Uh, and I think we had some other representatives in there too. I don't remember exactly who they were, what they were, what agency they were with.
FEMA, Tidham, and county employees.
The, uh, the format for the program, the meeting that we had had to do with, uh, the different categories and how FEMA treats them and how we go about, um, reporting these damages and, uh, one of the things that we did talk about, I think that we're going to, is Road and Bridge. And we talked about the, specifically the Cade Loop Bridge, uh, and the damaged roads and other damaged bridges here in, in the county. And we had put in, uh, the first edition budget and the second edition budget. Let me find where the...
Ten million and fifty-six thousand.
Mm-hmm.
It's actually just ten million. The fifty-six thousand is leftover ARPA interest projects.
It's Fund Thirty, for those that are looking on the budget. And the budget is on the website, by the way. The proposed budgets. And what we had in there was...
Sorry, it's not on there yet. It won't be out until you, until you file.
Oh, okay. I must have corrected on that.
Right.
And if you, if you pick up the second edition budget, the proposed budget, and you look in the, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven columns over, uh, you'll see a ten million, fifty-six thousand, and fifty-seven dollar number. That number is a, a combined number of the ARPA savings or interest?
The ARPA interest projects.
Right. That's, that's leftover. That's the fifty-six thousand. I think that's right, isn't it?
Yes.
And the other ten million is, I can potentially see for us to have to be able to make the matching grant with FEMA, which is a seventy-five, twenty-five matching grant.
Correct.
And so that was a, uh, an estimate that, uh, Michelleton and I worked up when we were hearing that it was gonna cost as much as six and a half billion dollars just for the Cade Loop Bridge. And, uh, what we learned yesterday, primarily from the engineers, I think, as much as anybody, but FEMA wasn't one, one that really, uh, they listened to it, but they weren't the ones that really had the input for it.
Well, they gave us their estimate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And their, their estimate, I had that...
Was 1.2?
No, no, it's...
He's...
Plus five hundred for a temporary.
I had it, I have an orange Post-it for it. It is one million, one hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and six dollar and thirty-eight cent estimate. That's what FEMA came up with. And as of yesterday afternoon, as the, uh, Emergency Management Director, I sent a email to FEMA approving that estimate. So that action has been taken, and it is in the works.
True.
That's what you wanted to know, right? Yeah. Okay. But can you elaborate a little bit? What is that gonna cover? Is that just the Cade Loop?
Well, additionally, there'll be about a five hundred thousand dollar temporary bridge. It'll be a separate project that will go in down...
Excited.
Yeah, right. Go in to, to where there's good access because the other bridge has got water over it.
Let me just give, give the public some background.
Sure.
How many people know where the Cade Loop Bridge is? Some people don't.
Right.
And the only way in and out of that side of the river, Cade Loop Bridge crosses from the Ingram side of the river, uh, over to, uh, some private dwellings on the other side of the river, as well as camps. Sierra Vista and Rio Vista are on that side of the river. And the place where we're talking about the temporary bridge is the Rio Vista Crossing, which is a low-water crossing that usually has five or six inches of water in it. Obviously, recently, it's had much more water in it than that. But that is the only other crossing to be able to get in and out of that side of the river. And there was a displacement of, of one of the concrete sections on the Cade Loop Bridge that needs to be placed back in properly. And that can be done, uh, apparently without having to rebuild the bridge. That was the big issue. Did we have to rebuild the bridge? If we did, six and a half million dollars. If we didn't, then it's just these lower figures. The temporary bridge would be placed at Rio Vista so that they're gonna have to get the traffic out of that water. So, and I don't remember the exact construction. You were, you attended that meeting, Tom. You may know.
Yeah, they'll, we, we have a separate work order for that, a separate job for that. And when it gets approved, they're looking at around five hundred thousand dollars top end. They would put that in place before they began construction. On Cade Loop, that way we had a good in and out at all times.
Well, to clarify, they're gonna put the temporary bridge on Rio Vista.
Correct.
And they're going to reset the concrete slabs, or not slabs, panel.
Right, at Cade Loop.
Yeah.
So that should lower that number significantly, right?
Yes, we'll take out the six point five million for Cade Loop Bridge and put in its place the one point one seven million and five hundred thousand.
Right. So that'll drop you down over four million dollars from like ten million. Where are you looking at?
It's closer to five, but...
Closer to five?
Yeah. That's huge.
That's huge.
Which should in turn allow us to possibly look at lowering that tax rate.
So we're still, even with that change, we are still under the 25% that's recommended for the three months. And so in making that change, it takes us to twenty-four forty-one.
Personally, that doesn't bother me a bit. I think this is the time to go below 25%. Not a problem.
So, so it's certainly an option, Commissioner Paces. And one thing that has to be thought about though, two or three different things. If, are you looking at the proposed budget or the version two budget? So if you'll notice for next year, we're looking at as of this budget, taking seven million dollars of our fund balance at the very, in the general fund. That has an estimated fund balance coming forward of about twenty million. And that would take us down to thirteen million. That's not sustainable. If, if you start looking at that too much and that's the concern. And so the, the, another outcome of that is currently whenever we go out for debt or refinancing any bonds, which is what we did this last year to take advantage of lower rates. And so we, one of the things that's asked by S and P whenever we talk to them for our bond rating is are we following the best practice and what, and so our best practice is the 25%. It's a standard across any business. Businesses try to keep six, I'm trying to, they, they try to keep closer to...
Six months.
Six months, thank you, instead of just the three months. And so again, the three months gets us for the time that we don't have the taxes coming in. And keep in mind, this will affect also not only the interest rate that we pay, but as we use the money to fund current projects, your fund balance is going to decrease. So it's going to decrease the amount of interest that the county receives. So just the opposite side of some of the stuff that you're talking about, other considerations to keep in mind.
And also in the emergency management budgeting, they do emphasize this 25%. And counties do get below that, but try to get it where you can be able to bring it back up. And it is one of the fundamental criteria that I say lenders, the financial community that issues the bonds, I understand that.
So you're saying this would take our fund balance back up to about twenty-four?
Yes, at the end of the year.
Twenty-four percent.
Right, twenty-four percent.
And that's before anything that you've heard today takes place.
And just FYI, every, every time we go out for financing, I have to, with the auditor, the auditor guy, I have to sit down and have a conversation with the lenders. And one of the very first questions they ask us is, what percentage are you future fund balance? So that's, it's pretty critical. But even, even what we've got here is spending our fund balance down by seven million dollars, which we're grateful that we have it. Because we have put, been able to maintain the fund balance. But one of the other things they teach us is the three-year rule, that usually the consequence of your disaster are finally felt in that last year. When you have under, your revenues have been under where they were. And you're trying to get them back and the expenses never go down, not, at least not appreciably. It's pretty constant. And so by the time the third year gets there, that's when we, that's the crisis period. When they look at, are you going to be able to make it? And so what we're trying to do is prepare for that third year. So we're in a good position at this point because of what Road and Bridge, I mean, good news, bad news for Road and Bridge. The bad news is they got roads to fix, but the good news is they can't do those other projects for the capital outlays, which has freed up a big chunk of the budget.
Yep. And, and we always have a, you know, we, we come up with our estimate of year-end reserves and it's always a lot higher. And we always underestimate or overestimate depending on how you want to look at it.
In healthy years, that's true.
Yeah.
I'm nervous about...
Well, even last year, you know, we, as I recall, we were forecasting, when we approved last year's budget, there was going to be a seventeen point eight million dollar reserve at the end of that year. And now I'm looking at it and it's closer to twenty-six point seven.
Our budgets increased.
Commissioner Paces, the reason for that is we don't know what the current year is, how we're going to turn out at the end of the year. And so as of now, yes, we know what we did last year. But we didn't know that going into the next year. So that's always going...
We always have a higher reserve balance than what was in the approved budget. Because we underspend.
And our expenses are unplanned this year that we've had to make room for. And again, this is still what was in the budget for last year, spending 100% of that.
I guess I'm a wordsmith and splitting hairs here, but it's not that we're really underspending. It's that we overplan for the, I call them the silent contingencies. And I have no control over that. And I don't know how much my department heads and elected officials have overestimated their contingencies. Because everybody has their own little private contingency plan. And we've been trying, trying to deal with that, but it is what it is. But historically, it's, it's been there. Yes, it has. And it's there again this year. Whether it's there next year, I don't know. But it's additional information that has to be considered.
Um, one, one of the ones that do, and Sheriff, I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit here, but what I just heard the sheriff say is he's having trouble coming up with money and, and looking for money that's left over in his budget. He normally has money left over in his budget. So Sheriff, do you foresee that you're going to have as much money left over in your budget this year as you had in prior years?
No, I, I don't definitely. I mean, my overtime's gone. I mean, that's a question, you know, how much overtime? I mean, normal years I'm fine, but this year, you know, one event, one event just wiped it out. Fuel, you know, normally, normally I do have money in different places, but I've known it's, it's going to be slim this year for us because we had sixty-plus units running 24 hours a day for, you know, three weeks. So mine, but of course, we're different. And like I said, we work 24/7, but I don't see a lot of extra mine.
That's fine, thank you. Anything else? Now... Which agenda item are we on? So these are departments? Okay. Well, we've jumped back and forth between them.
We have that.
Commissioner Jones wanted to talk about what happened yesterday at the meeting to consider how that would reduce the second edition budget from the Cade Loop conversation. And so that's what brought you back to one point two. But we were talking about one point three.
Sure.
So the court can make a better decision in one point three after hearing the Cade Loop conversation.
It appears to me that there's a, at least an implied conversation about how do we deal with the reduced numbers regarding FEMA? I think that's what you really want to talk about.
That's right, because it impacts the budget.
But it's very helpful, having that understanding. Offsets the addition that the sheriff just put on us.
So how much will we reduce that?
Sorry, what?
How much do we reduce that number?
Well, we, Tanya just said it's closer to five.
Yeah. About in half.
So when you're looking at all the increases that we've got, we've got the other five on that, we've got everything the sheriff's department needs. So you're looking at another probably million dollars towards that. So you've still got about a six million dollar increase. Which would be in line with about...
A six million dollar increase.
Well, I'm saying from last year's budget to this, this, what you're proposing now, that, that was unexpected that we're having to deal with. This is unexpected as far as I can tell with, with what the sheriff's asking for, along with what we're going to have with the FEMA and ARPA funds. It's going to come out to about an additional six million dollars from your normal budget. Is that right?
I'm, I'm not...
I said, I'm sorry. I said, it, it looks to me like we're looking at about an additional six million dollars from what we anticipated. Five million from the FEMA money and about an additional close to a million dollars with the sheriff's department additions.
That would go the opposite way.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why I'm asking.
Why are you adding them?
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm asking.
One is additional expense and the other one has less anticipated liability than what we planned.
Right, but it's still, it's still...
Well, I don't think you add them together. I think you offset them against each other.
Yeah, that's right.
Also, there would be a four million dollar reduction in the second edition budget.
That's right.
Right.
The sheriff was six hundred and fifty thousand or something, wasn't he?
It's more than that by the time you...
Is it more?
Well, with what he'd already added that we already approved.
Well, it's, it's from what's in this.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, thank you. I didn't think I was completely losing my mind. I could have by now. Yeah, I could have by now, but...
So anything else on one point two?
No.
Now we're back to wage adjustment.
Well, that sure got quiet.
Well, we have another person that wants to address the court, Terry Lyle.
Good morning. My name is Terry Lyle. I'm currently employed in the district clerk's office. I've been employed with Kerr County 24 years. I've had a second job for 23 of those 24 years just to make ends meet. I've been listening to the live stream this morning and there was a portion of it that some of the commissioners made visits to county employees to question whether they would prefer a raise over increased taxes. And the consensus was, well, I'd rather have no raise than for you to raise my property taxes. I'm a property taxpayer as well. I was not approached to see my opinion. My opinion is that a person may decide not to have property taxes raised because we can't afford to pay anymore. So of course they're going to tell you, well, don't give me a raise then. The salary that everyone is earning now is not enough. It has not been enough for years. Like I said, 23 out of 24 years, I have had a second job. Thankfully, I've had a second job. Others don't have that fortune. The new people coming into employment in Kerr County are making the same wages or barely wages over McDonald's. Another thing I do is collect money for the county. I've done it for 15 years now. What happens with that money that comes into the county? I bring in a lot of money to the county. Thousands of dollars every month in collections. And yet the employees are struggling every day. If there was any visits made by the commissioners, they did not come to our office. Why didn't you send out a survey? Send out a survey to all the employees so all the employees could have the same fair chance instead of basing your decision upon the few that you visited. You could have visited people with high income, you could have visited people with low income. I don't know.
You're implying I made a decision off of what other people said and that is not correct.
No, what I'm saying is that I was not visited to voice my opinion. Others were visited so you could base your decision.
My decision will be made off of the numbers we have in front of us, not off of a visit.
Then understand that their voice to forego a raise, I bet is solely based upon they cannot afford it.
Could be.
I know I can't. I could not afford to pay higher property taxes right now and I don't want to get a third job. I'm thankful for two, but I don't want a third.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion about wage adjustment?
Just, I'll point out that even a 1% wage increase would more than offset any new taxes if we went with the no new revenue tax rate. And of course, if we go with the no new tax rate that Bob recently gave us, there, there wouldn't be an offset. They would have roughly a five hundred dollar increase based on an average salary of 50,000. I'm just throwing that out. Open to any other views on how much, if any, wage adjustment?
A decision has to be made today. Let's take a five-minute recess and come back.
Okay.
I'm good with that.